I will call this meeting of the Corleville City Council to order on December 12th, 2023. Could I have the roll call?
Knutson?
Here.
Gross?
Here.
Hun?
Here.
Pat Peterson?
Here.
Goodrich?
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Gross?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Item number four, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the overall comment time and the individual speaking time, based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us? Okay. Then we will move on to number five. We have our FY '23 audit report, and we have an auditor from Bergen KDB here to share that information with us. And I just wanted to note that this audit was received and it was placed on file December 7th, 2023. And you can view copies of this in our agenda packet. They will also be available online on the city's website, and at the Corleville Public Library, and at City Hall, beginning on December 13th, 2023. And with that, I will turn it over to our guest.
Beautiful. Hopefully, everyone can hear me all right. My name is Dustin Opats. I'm the Audit Manager for the city's audit, and I'm super excited to be here. So thank you for the opportunity. If at any point you have any questions during my presentation, feel free to stop me. I have such a passion for city finance, that if nobody says anything, I'll just blow through the entire presentation. So yeah, feel free to interrupt me, otherwise we can catch any questions at the end, too. No worries. So I wanted to start with the different reports that we issued. So this first one being the Independent Auditor's Report, which is essentially what the city pays us for, to issue an opinion on the city's basic financial statements. So you, as management, are responsible for the financial statements. You're responsible for recording all the transactions appropriately, and all the different accruals. And it's our responsibility, as your auditors, to come in, you know, test, examine, audit those numbers, to make sure they're appropriate. So we do give an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we are allowed to give as your auditors. It states that everything is fairly presented in all material respects. It's the same opinion the city has received in the past from us, as well. A couple other reports that we issued, the first one being the Government Auditing Standards Report. So because of the level of grants that the city receives, we're required to look a little bit closer at compliance with laws, contracts, grant agreements, internal controls. So we did have one internal control finding. It was related to a prior period adjustment. Essentially, we found an error in a prior year number, and the amount was large enough that we had to do a restatement. So it was related to an accrual that just got missed last year. The next report that I wanted to talk to was the Single Audit Report. So because you expend more than $750,000 of federal funds, we're required to pick on a couple specific federal programs, and do a specific audit of those programs. And so we had no findings related to that test work this year. The last report I wanted to talk to was the Iowa Legal Compliance Report. So the Office of the State Auditor gives us a ton of checklists of specific state statutes that they want us to check compliance with. And so we did have three findings related to that test work. They're the same three findings the city has received in years past from us. There were expended amounts in excess of budgeted amounts. So even if, in total, you are under budget, Iowa State Statute looks at it by function areas, so public works, public safety, culture and rec. And so if any of those specific functions are over budget, we're required to ding you for it. The second one is deficit fund balance. You do have a couple funds that are in significant deficit, and so we're required to bring that up as well. And then the very last one was not all inter-fund transfers were approved by City Council. This one has been getting better the last couple years, but there still were a couple this year, and so, again, something else to bring to your attention. Next, we'll kind of start our financial analysis, starting with the general fund, and then going into some of the enterprise funds. So your total general fund fund balance did increase by 11.1% to $18.6 million, which is the second largest in the five years presented. There were a couple, there was a variance between the different categories. So the city does commit a significant number of dollars to some different departments, and so that number decreased by about $5.7 million this year, which caused your unassigned fund balance to increase a significant amount. And so if you're looking at fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, your fund balance policy calls for about 35%, and at the end of the year, you were at about 62%, which is significantly higher than your policy, but it's not that the city gained that much more money. It's there was a different allocation between these committed and unassigned balances. So I wanted to bring that up as well. On the revenue side, we do look at allocation. So the allocation year-over-year was pretty steady. Your intergovernmental revenue is going to go down next year, simply because you're not going to receive a third round of ARPA funding. So the last two years, this number has been elevated from what it's been historically, just because you have received that ARPA, and then next year, in FY '24, that will go away. Looking at revenues year-over-year, property taxes did increase by about $503,000, related to an increase in the levy. Your hotel motel taxes increased by about $580,000, just related to increased activity. You did, your intergovernmental did decrease due to, in FY '22, you received a shuttered venue grant, and then that was a one, that was one-time money, so that decreased by about $350,000 this year. Your charges for services increased just over a million, related to increased parking rec programs. Your licenses and permits increased $216,000, related to increased building permit revenue. And then your use of money and property revenue increased about $366,000, related to some of those better market conditions, and earning a higher percentage interest rate on the money in the bank. On the expenditure side, we do a very similar comparison. Again, pretty similar year-over-year. Probably the biggest increase is going to be this health and social services, which we'll look at in a little bit. You did increase your contributions to some of those social service organizations pretty significantly this year. And so overall, expenditures increased by about $2.5 million. $1.3 million of that was in culture and rec, related to some of that increased programming that drove the higher revenues. And then health and social service expenditures increased by about $566,000, which is driven by that higher social service organization contributions. Moving on to some of your enterprise funds, starting with the water fund. So we present a few different bars here, right? So the green bar is going to be your revenues, blue bar is expenditures, gray bar is your income or your loss, with everything included, and then the orange is your income or loss, with depreciation taken out. So the reason that we give you both is because depreciation is obviously a non-cash expense. It represents your capital replacement cost. So when some of those bigger infrastructure needs come due, this is a better gauge. If you've been covering depreciation, then hopefully that money is sitting in your reserves, and there's less of a need to issue debt, right? But we take it out as well, because it's non-cash. So it can sometimes make it hard to understand if the fund is operating sustainably, when you start throwing some of those capital costs in there. So yeah, for the next three or four slides, you'll see both of those numbers presented. So the water fund, this fund has covered depreciation in all five years presented. That number is the lowest in the five years presented, though, and it has gone down over the last four years. And so I did want to point that out, that it is still covering depreciation, but almost just barely now. Expenses increased about 10.9% related to some increased repair and maintenance costs. And then your revenues increased by about 6.9% related to some increased usage with your growth. On the sewer side, this fund is operating a little more sustainably, had a pretty healthy income after depreciation all five years. The number has fluctuated, you know, based on some repair and maintenance needs. This year, expenses decreased related to paying less interest on debt. On the parking fund, this again has been pretty sustainable. You had one weird year with COVID, right, when those facilities weren't being utilized fully, and so you did have a small loss that year. But that since has rebounded, and your operating revenues were pretty consistent, and then your operating expenses did increase about 5.1% related to increased interest expense. Last, but certainly not least, the hotel fund. So as we've talked in years past, this fund is, you know, has been struggling, related to some of the, they got impacted, you know, by far the most by COVID, and has struggled the most to come back after that, right? And so this, one year, it had income if you take out depreciation. If you include depreciation in, then it has not had positive net income in the five years presented. So revenues did increase 24.5% related to some increased activity, but on the other side of that, your expenses also increased 14.1%, just because if you, you know, your hotel is more full, it costs money to upkeep it, right? And then, yeah, unrestricted net position has been negative in all five years presented. So wanted to keep your, keep it front of mind, I know it's, it is front of mind for you, but wanted to bring that up. The general fund has made significant contributions to the hotel fund to keep it sufficient, sufficiently funded, but yeah, wanted to bring it to your attention. The last two slides are, look at your tax capacity levy and your rates. So your tax rates did increase slightly, and then your property valuation increased slightly, which led to an overall increase in your tax levy of about 1%. And that was what I had. I'm, yeah, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that I can, and this is how you would get ahold of me, anytime throughout the year. We're definitely here as a resource for you, if you ever have any questions or anything you want to bounce off of, where, bounce off us, we are definitely here for you. But yeah, I'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you for that overview. Any questions? I'm assuming you probably have some questions?
Well, you just said we increased the levy.
Yes.
I didn't remember that.
I mean, it wasn't a large increase, to go from 21.6 to 21.8.
Well, that's income. That's not shown on the levy. What was it? That might have been on the previous levy.
Oh, okay, yes, so in 2020. Yeah, it's, um...
Did we increase the levy?
It's the same levy it was in 2021.
Well, that was, that would be the year before, because last year's budget is the one we're in right now, so he was, that would be last year's, the previous year's.
And that's the general fund levy?
Right.
Okay.
Other questions?
Looks like we returned it to 21 levels, actually. It went down a little bit and then back up.
All right. Anything else? Well, we have...
I'd just like to thank Dustin and his staff for getting this done so quickly for us, because it helps us tremendously before budget, to be able to have all of our actual fund balances completed. It also helps us to get it out. There's a lot of different bondholders, banks, et cetera, that rely on these audits, and so we appreciate getting it so quickly.
Absolutely. Okay.
Is what you present available for us to view anywhere?
It's in our packet.
It's not in the same?
I don't think the charts are in the packet.
Oh, these charts are in the communication letter. So that would be like the smaller of the two documents, that would make up your final documents. Yeah, this and pretty much all of the notes that I just went through are all part of that document.
Mine, they're in our packet, because I saw it.
Okay.
It's on the second, it's the second one of the two that's attached.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right. Well, if we don't have any other questions, again, really appreciate all of your work. Thank you for sharing this information with us, and as Kelly said, it's very helpful as we go into budget season, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks. So the staff are always great to us, so we always appreciate all their hard work. Because, yeah, they do, you know, hours and hours of prep work to get ready for us. So we're always very appreciative of that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want me to stop sharing? I don't know. I'll leave it to Thor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Fantastic. On to item number six. We have JRS Third Edition Final Plat. And this will plat lots four and five, south of Highway 6, and north of Lot 1, in the West Core Business Park. And we will start with a community development report from Dave Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have too much on this one, other than to note that the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this at their December 6 meeting, and by a vote of five to zero, they did recommend approval of the final plat.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Okay. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving the final plat for JRS Third Edition Correville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Hun. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay. Roll call.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Hun?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number seven, we have the second consideration of an ordinance that would amend our West Land Use Area Master Plan. And we had a pretty extensive presentation on this item at our last meeting, and a nice overview of what those changes are. So could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1016, an ordinance amending the Correville Community Plan 2014 Edition, by amending the 2016 West Land Use Area Master Plan as previously amended. This ordinance introduced for second consideration by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Aye. Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Gross? Oh.
He's gone. I was gonna say, I don't know if he was here.
He just left.
Hun?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Okay. Item eight, Construction Site Runoff and Sediment Control Ordinance. This is the third reading of an ordinance, and these changes are in response to the EPA's comments from a recent audit of the Construction Site Runoff and Sediment Control Ordinance. Could I have it read, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1015, an ordinance amending Chapter 159 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Correville regarding construction site runoff and sediment control. This ordinance introduced third and final consideration by Councilmember Hun, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions or comments? All right. Roll call.
Hun?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye. Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes, with Gross absent. Item nine, Wetland Mitigation Credit Purchase Agreement. This agreement is for 0.46 acres of forested wetland that the Kemp lift station abandonment will impact. And this is not to exceed $32,200. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a forested wetlands mitigation credit purchase agreement with a Cedar River Crossing Wetland Mitigation Bank, and payment for the Kemp Lift Station Abandonment Project. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions, comments, or discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Hun?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes, with Gross absent. Number 10, Consulting Services Agreement. This agreement is for assistance in the city's fiscal year '25 budget process, in the absence of a finance director, and as we transition with a new finance director. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Creighton Schmidt for assistance in preparation of the FY '25 budget. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or comments on this item?
Good idea. My comment. Get you some help. Much needed.
Absolutely. Okay. Could I have the roll call?
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Hun?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 11, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar, A to W, as presented. Thank you.
Moved by Hun. Can I get a second? Seconded by Knutson. Can I have the roll call, please?
Knutson?
Aye.
Hun?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Number 12, City Administrators' Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd just like to thank all of the volunteers and citizens that helped us with the Isle of Lights this last weekend, on Sunday. It was an excellent turnout. We ran out of drinks and food, and that was just a sign of all the people participating, and we had a lot of fun, a lot of new things this year, and people seemed to enjoy it. So we look to continue to build on that. And then also, our fire chief would like to make sure the public and all of you are invited to a push ceremony for Engine 71 at 6:00 PM, Monday evening, the 18th. It'll be just about 15 minutes, but this is a tradition that many fire departments follow when they get a new engine, and so they will be doing that on Monday evening. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Mayor's report, really don't have anything this evening, just wanted to echo Kelly's sentiments about Isle of Lights. Very fun evening. Love to see that we're growing the event, especially love seeing that we're growing the different community organizations that are present. We had a small number last year, and I'm starting to see that the number of people out there, number of groups out there, is growing year-over-year, and love that part in addition to this community tradition. And I will defer to Councilmember Hun, but also wanted to just say thank you to everyone who attended the community meal, helped out with the community meal, all the sponsors, city staff, volunteers, the food pantry. It was one of my favorite ones to date. Really loved the menu, and it was a lot of fun. So thank you very much for all of your efforts on that. And that is all I have. City Attorney's Report?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Committee and Councilmembers' Report, we'll start down at this end with Lori.
Okay. Thank you. Wanted to mention that on the consent calendar, we did have approval of the 65-gallon recycling, single-stream recycling cans, carts. So that's coming up for spring, just as a note for our audience and people that are watching online. Also, the Correville Connection came out, and there's wonderful information. The staff do such a great job on giving us information, what to do this winter, how to take care of ourselves, our streets, our cars, our people, you know, how to salt, all that. And also, there's a little spot where you can adopt a fire hydrant, and so I'd encourage you to look, look through this, take some time. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, not a whole lot, but I would like to echo again, all three of you guys already spoke about the Isle of Lights. I've lived in the community forever. I live on 12th Avenue, so I've always got to enjoy the beautiful lights, but I never really knew how much went into that, and how much more we did. It was really neat, and like I told them earlier, I have come to the consensus that Correville has the cutest kids in the state of Iowa. But yeah, I was just really, I really enjoyed myself. I look forward to next year doing it again, and yeah, just love this community and love what everybody's doing for the community. So thank you.
Thank you so much, and I would have to agree with you on that, since five of them are mine. Two of the five are not children, technically, anymore, but... All right. Councilmember Hun?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to begin with reminding the general public that if you have any kids, or really, I don't know, just kids, not adults, that need swimming lesson, the City of Correville, the rec center is offering free Level 1 swimming lesson, although I've learned today that January and February is full, so look forward to March, if you have kids that need to learn how to swim. It's free for Correville resident. The community meal took place last Friday. Kickstarted Luminary Celebration, Winter Celebration, in the City of Correville, and it was one of the biggest meal, the biggest winter meal that we have ever had. We served over 500 people. It was really great to see so many different community come out and share meal with one another, you know, carry, having conversation with one another. We received some, I don't want to say report, but some feedbacks that some of the folks that helped serve at the line was really, enjoyed their time talking to another community member who looked completely different from them. You know, it happened to be a young Muslim person that's standing next to an older Caucasian couple, serving to anyone that go through the line, and between dishing out the food, they were able to just have a conversation and learn more about each other, you know, and how different they are, but yet, at the same time, how similar, you know, people are within our community. So that was very heartwarming, and they said that was one of the best moments that, you know, of the evening. So thank you to everyone who's involved. Thank you to all the sponsor, and especially thank you to the community member who take the time out to come and eat with us. Put it on your calendar. The next one is going to be in March. We don't have the date yet, but mark it down somewhere on your calendar. And I would also like to use this space to let the general public know that if you used to like the food pantry, we do have new hours that begin this week. So Tuesday and Saturday stay the same, but the new hour will begin Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So Wednesday, instead of 5 to 7, is going to be from 4 to 6. Thursday, instead of 10 to noon, is going to be from 11:30 to 1:30. And then Friday, instead of noon to 1, it's going to be from 11 to 1. So please take notes of those. If you do use to like our service, make sure that you come in those hour. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Just a quick point of clarification on the food pantry hours. The ones on, the one on Friday, is that just the senior shopping? Is the expanded time just for all, for the seniors, or is it like half seniors and half?
Thank you for that question. Actually, on Friday, we reserved those two hour for just seniors, so 60-plus, and also folks with limited mobility. So for whatever reason, if you need a little bit more time to shop, whether it's because of noise issue, or, you know, crowded space, or, you know, you use a cane or anything, you can come in in those hour, and we reserve those two hour to give room for folks who just need a little bit more time to shop.
Awesome. Thank you. And I couldn't agree with you more about the community meal. Every time I've gone, I've talked to somebody different. I've met a new person, and that's what I love about the community meals.
And that's our goal.
That's right.
It's community building, right there.
It's awesome. All right. Finally, Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry to say I double-qualify for Friday, I guess. Limited mobility and over 60. Anyway, don't have much. I don't think I've heard anybody advertise Mitch's, the week from tonight, the reception honoring Mitch Gross right here at City Hall before our meeting, 5 to 6:30. I encourage people to attend that. 16 years of service, of amazing service. It'd be great to have a good turnout for that. And I'm sorry I missed Isle of Lights. I was up in Madison, and they have a kind of cool tradition of showing, of a street, Nagota Street, maybe? I can't remember the exact name. As you go downtown into Madison, everybody, not quite everybody, but the majority of homes have a huge Santa blow-up Santa that they have. And that was, that was cool to see, at least I could see that, and that's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
May I add one more?
Yes, you bet. Absolutely.
I would like to say thank you to each and every one of our staff from the city. Every time that there is an event, people don't see the work that they do, you know, beside the regular eight-to-five job. I mean, because of our staff, they volunteer their time afterward. That event can happen in our community. Just this past Friday for the community meal, there was 10 staff from the Rec Center that stayed to make sure that everything is, you know, up and going. And then the Luminary, so many staff are out there in the coal, putting out a bag, lighting the light, collecting the bag. It's a lot of work. And our library staff also step in to help out wherever they can, too. So I want the general public to know that our, how dedicated our staff are to the community. And because of them, we have the community that we live in. So thank you.
Thank you for that. I would agree, we have the best staff in the state of Iowa, hands down. No question. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by Hun. Can I get a second? Oh, God. You're right. Okay. So before adjourning, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to an executive session. And this executive session is to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered. And this is pursuant to Section 21.5, letter I of the Code of Iowa. So could I get a motion?
So motion to move into executive session?
Moved by Hun, seconded by Knutson. All in favor, say aye.
It's gotta be a roll call, Mayor.
Roll call. All right. Can I get a roll call?
Hun?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich? Knutson?
Okay. Motion is approved, all ayes. We will go back and into executive session. Then we'll be out to adjourn the meeting. I apologize for the snafu. It's the first time I've done this.